Welcome, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Lurford County Commissioners for Wednesday, August 7th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And after the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand for a moment of silence to honor the victims of gun violence in El Paso and Dayton and Gilroy. And we have two young individuals here, along with a grandpa, they want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Ron and Harper.
(Inaudible)
Commissioner Cora.
Present.
Commissioner Mathias.
Present.
Commissioner Marzinski.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Consideration of agenda.
Most to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes for the meeting from July 17th.
Solved.
Most to approve or second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And consideration of claims, Madam Magistrate.
Today we have payroll ending July 19th, 2019, in the amount of $1,227,966.49. And payroll ending August 2nd, 2019, in the amount of $1,254,216.9. And miscellaneous claims in the amount of $2,293,121.13.
Most to approve all claims.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Public comments, is there anybody from the public who would like to address?
Commissioner, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Jeanette Raymond, my address is 0632 West Nowat Drive, Lurford, Indiana. And I just come to you today briefly to ask that the Meadowview Estates flooding concerns that have been brought to your attention be put on the agenda for the next meeting. If we could have that done, that would be wonderful. We have a lot of residents from the subdivision planning to attend the August 21st meeting in the evening. So we just wanted to ask if we could be put on the agenda so that we had plenty of time to discuss the situation.
You know, we, after the concerns were brought up here, we had a meeting with our surveyor and the county highway. And we are coming up with some suggestions as to how best to address it.
Right.
And so let me get them together and then come up with some plan, okay? At least from our side, as to what are the potential remedies.
Okay.
And then once we have that, then we'll agenda it and we'll make sure that Diane notifies you.
Well, we do have a lot of residents that are already planning on coming on August 21st, just so that you're aware. And I did speak with Jerry Sullivan and he let me know that you guys were all talking together, which we're very excited about and very thankful for. But I do know there are a lot of residents that have a lot of questions, so there will be probably quite a few people in attendance on August 21st.
Thanks for the heads up. And then we'll try to come up with a plan, some solutions, and then we'll, we can discuss.
That sounds wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, you didn't want to consider doing a separate workshop on that issue as opposed to, since I know you want to bring your department heads together with the residents, so perhaps scheduling a separate workshop on a separate day?
And just, I, just dealing with only that one issue?
That's right.
Would that, would that work for you?
I'm sorry, having a separate meeting?
Separate workshop, just devoted to the topic.
So instead of the 21st? Okay. So will you contact?
Yep. Yep, through Diane, we'll, we'll contact you and we'll notify what, and that way, you know, instead of, instead of coming to the meeting, let's do a separate workshop, we'll focus on that and come up with some solutions.
Okay. That sounds great. Who should my contact be then?
Diane.
Diane?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think I have your, can you give me your phone number? Yes.
And our drainage board meeting is next Tuesday also, and we'll be talking about that.
About that, yeah.
So I should contact the residents and let them know?
And then once we have, yeah, once the drainage board meets, once we have some idea of what the solutions are, and then we'll organize a separate meeting for that.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Have to let the pretty girl go first, it makes me look better. My name is Dave Rens and I'm here representing the North Village Harvest Festival, annual festival.
Right, right.
This year it's September 7th and 8th in Door Village, of course. And we are requesting traffic assistance in the form of road cones, signs, speed limit signs, barriers, et cetera, et cetera. I have a list here that I have to be.
And we have done this annually, every year, I remember that, and I entered a motion to support that.
I move to support.
Second, all in favor? Aye. We'll get it done.
Who should I give this to?
Diane, yeah. And thanks for doing it. It's, it's a well-attended festival.
Well, it's money to keep that park going.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak at this time?
Ms. Phyllis.
Good morning, Phyllis.
Phyllis Marks, 118 Spagamore Park, Lurford. You have your little card that I made you, now, we didn't make that out, the Indiana Barn Foundation did that. We'll have forthcoming, which I think the county should have, since you own the county, is the barn, that we should have a, they have liability, Indiana Barn Foundation, if anything might go wrong with someone that's out there. So I wanted you to know that we're excited, it's getting close, and nice barn to show off. And I have one other thing, when we were working out there, we kind of had, the county, we addressed the county for almost everything we did, and went through the auditor's office also with our money. But we were wondering, and I was wondering, as the buildings were torn down, another thing I wanted to really thank, the maintenance department or whoever's working on that, boy, it's coming along. We're so, so proud of them. There's still work to do, but it's getting shiny out there.
Larry is listening and he's happy, happy to hear that, thank you so much.
By the way, we are so excited about what they're doing. And I wish I could do more out there, but the other thing, when we were working out there, and as the buildings were torn down, of course, we weren't a part of that, but I often wondered what happened to all of the wrought iron fence that used to be around the county home. Some of it was not in good shape, and they put that up by the barn. It had grown, trees had grown in it and it was not worth, but there were probably 20 some, it'd probably take four men and two boys to move one. But anyway, we wondered, I've been wondering where it disappeared to, one of the officials said, well, it got feet and walked away. So, I mean, it is a county, you know, it's something that the county owned, where did wrought iron fence go?
Yeah, I do not know, and we'll find that out and we'll let you know.
Well, someone said, who is it important to? It's important to because I think the county is responsible. What did, what did they do with it? You know, is there some rucker? Because there was quite a bit of it and it was in good shape.
I'm not sure, but I think the highway department took it out of there, but I don't know what they did with it, I'll check with Bob.
The fire department?
Highway, highway department.
The highway department.
I think.
I think he's the gentleman that said it got feet and walked away.
I hope not.
Well, anyway, you know, it's something that should be looked into because it was, it was really, really nice.
Yeah, I share your concern, Ms. Marks.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Morning.
Morning. Mike Mullinour, County Council, thank you very much for allowing my grandsons to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
No, thank you, actually, when I saw them walking and I said, well, they're getting started early in life, you know?
That's right. Regarding what Phyllis just mentioned, I do have a little information on that to let you know and clarify maybe a few things that I did make, well, first off, Phyllis brought my, to my attention that the fence was missing, this was quite a while back now, you know, just, I think, right before the first of the year. And I did go out and talk to Mr. Young and talked to another gentleman, and there was some fencing, Mr. Young's the one that told me that, that it evidently disappeared, grew legs and walked off, which, so evidently nobody made a police report, so I went out and looked what was there. And there's probably about eight pieces, I have a photo of it, that was brought over there, and it was, from what I understand, from talking to Phyllis and also talking to the county highway, that those pieces were like a, an old pen or something, that they maybe had some animal contained or something. But that, it was brought to the county highway, that is there. And like I said, it's not in that bad a shape, it could be straightened out, I think, by somebody that knows what they're doing. But we all know that this is expensive fencing, it was at one time, I believe, completely around the county home, and like Phyllis Marks mentioned, that there was probably, I would say at least 20, more like 30 pieces, that were stored there, that were in excellent shape, they were leaning against the building, that building was tore down by the county highway, and, and I think they buried things, concrete and part of it or whatever, but I do remember when that was going on, but the fence is missing, I did contact the sheriff, I contacted the prosecutor, John Lake, I also contact, when I did contact the sheriff, I talked to Chief of Detectives, Captain Pat Cicero, and he's making a report out on that, and I'm sure they're going to look into it, so.
Right, yeah.
I'll keep you abreast on that, but, and let you know what's going on.
Thanks for the thought, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Thanks again for allowing them to.
Yeah, no, no, thank you, thank you.
If you don't mind, I want to do this during public comment, because even though I'm number nine on your agenda, and the reason why I want to talk publicly about this is because I have people waiting for me, I have about 75 felons over there, the magistrate's handling it for a few minutes. I want to, once again, thank the Commission for its past support, and overwhelming support in, in not just whatever you needed for us to, to get monies through, but in letters of support, and I know in spirit for our Juvenile Detention and Alternatives Initiative that we've been part of for several years, and been part of the entire revamping of juvenile justice in this county that we've been after for, at for about 12 years. One of the elements of JDAI is not just reforming conditions of confinement, which kids get confined, which kids we send to boys school, which ones we try to divert from the system so that they're not part of the problem, which is the main goal. One of the eight areas is the problem of disproportionate minority contact. Early on in the process, our numbers in this county were atrocious. It was almost five to one odds that you were going to be arrested as a juvenile if you were a person of color as opposed to a person who were white. Clearly, more than enough that would outweigh any difference in socioeconomic status between the groups. Further troubling was that even when they were in the system, at the different process points and decision-making points, the juvenile justice system at that point was also disproportionate. Through the years, we've kept track of these numbers and we've managed to handle a lot of what happens within the system. But our numbers, and we have been using some of our JDAI grant monies to do education of police officers and other people in the system on just generally how the teen brain worked, and also implicit bias, et cetera. Part of the, in fact, our juvenile symposium this year, as you know, we put one on every year for people who work in the system through all different parts, our juvenile symposium this year, the title is "The Elephant in the Room," and that is the elephant in the room. Probably overdue that, since, that we've talked about. Part of the JDA monies is they're giving us money as a lead county in REI, which is their label for reducing the disproportionate minority contact with, contact with the system, is that they're providing a lot of different training sessions. Number nine happens to be sending Carolyn, Caroline Maslinsky, who's a counselor at the Juvenile Services Center, to one of these programs. It costs us zero, no mileage, no food, nothing for the program, all handled by this, it costs the county one thing, the gas we put in the van to go down there. All right? Thank you again.
First of all, I want to thank you and the staff that you're working with for addressing a very important issue that you have highlighted, so thank you very much.
Yeah, it's just one of the many issues in there, and I know that you've been very supportive in the past, I know Sheila wasn't here, but I know she would have been and she still is, so, thank you very much.
So I'll entertain a motion to support the request.
And in case, well, and in case you have any questions, I'm leaving Mike behind here, he's okay.
All right. Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate it, all right. I'll entertain a motion to support.
Move to support this really important initiative, and thank you Judge Alavizos.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Public comment.
Hi, good morning. My name is Valerie, I live at 5255 West 800 North, and I'm back here to do a follow-up. The last time we were here, you said that you were looking into it and you would get back to me, and I hadn't heard anything, and I was wondering, is it because Attorney Freeman asked me to file a lawsuit? That's not what I want to do. Filing a lawsuit means the money that we have to pay, Mr. Freeman, to look into this is money that you could have the employees of the county to clean my ditch. I'm still asking for my ditch to be cleaned, I still don't know what the problem is.
You know, from what I remember from the last consultation, that you, you had counsel and.
Because they told, excuse me for interrupting.
No, no, no problem.
But they asked, they, I was told to get counsel for whatever reason.
Okay.
I don't feel that I need to get counsel to get the county to do their job.
Okay.
Why do I have to get counsel to sue the county, to have the county to clean the ditches that they should have done in the first place?
I think the reason that was given in the past was because there, there's more than one jurisdiction that needs to take care of your problem, one is the county, other one is Indot, and to bring Indot into the picture, it's, because we cannot do this on our own, that, that's what my understanding was, can you clarify?
That's correct, and I believe you do have legal counsel, correct?
I do have legal counsel, for whatever reason, just clean the ditch.
And rather than.
It's coming around the season for me.
I know. And rather than invite suit, what we have said is file a notice of tour claim, that's different than filing a suit. The notice of tour claim will then bring Indot's attention into that, because Indot needs to participate. Highway has already done that, Mr. Young and others have been out on site, they've prepared a report, they're prepared to participate, but this needs to be jointly done with the state of Indiana, so that's what we've suggested, that your attorney file the notice of tour claim. If you want to have him contact my office, I'll be happy to help walk him through it.
Because we need to get Indot to help us do this.
So I gotta pay an attorney.
You've already paid an attorney, you've in fact retained an attorney.
I retain an attorney to send a letter to Gallagher. You may be upset, but I've been doing this for 19 years.
I understand.
I'm very upset, because another season is gonna come, and another flooding season is gonna come, another snow season is gonna come, and it's 19 years, clean the ditch.
We've suggested a route, and what I suggest is that you have your attorney contact my office so that he can get a notice of tour claim on file, and we can get the state's participation as well, it's not strictly the county's role and responsibility. County has some responsibility, Mr. Young and his team have been out, we need Indot to participate as well, you would agree with me, they bear a responsibility as well.
I agree with you on that point, but they did come out and clean the ditch, and Mr. Young was supposed to come and clean the ditch. Indot, all of the facilities was there, I was told by Gallagher and Bassett that everybody had to be on my property, I had 30 people on my property assessing the property, Indot told them, I can do these ditches, but it would not serve her any purpose if you don't do what you're supposed to do. Bob Young told me that as soon as you get yours done, notify us, they did, he said, we'll be out there in two days, they never showed.
You know, here's what I'll do, because I, I was under the impression that your counsel was, want to contact and get the Indot involved, but if that does not happen, let's, we'll figure out what's the best way and I'll, I'll be in communication with you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else from the public who'd like to comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to department heads, department head comments.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Amanda Laners, Lurford County Health Department.
Larry Lovendowski, Director of Facilities.
So as you know, very recently, it was brought to the attention of the Commissioners in the Health Department that several employees have become ill with upper respiratory infections in one of the buildings. Once we were notified of that, the Commissioners in the Health Department, we were able to find a firm that was able to come in and, their specialty is finding potential sources of infection. The firm is located in Louisville, Kentucky, I contacted them Monday and they were here yesterday morning. And they did 10 tow hour round trip drive yesterday, they did collect samples to get back to their laboratory, their facility is a CDC elite laboratory that they have there in Louisville. The individuals that became ill, as far as we know, became sick in the early part of July. And to the best of our knowledge, there have not been any new cases. I checked with Jenny Smith, our nursing supervisor, before I came down this morning, and she got on the infectious disease reporting website, and she did say that there are no pending labs and no pending cases of this morning.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Anything you wanted to add to that, Larry?
One of the things in the tour that we did, he did take 13 samples, he did mention that something that we should keep considered is the construction that does, is going on next door to us at the time, says that it is, you know, something to always keep in mind when you have construction around your facilities and stuff.
Right, right. You know, I, I just wanted to mention that it was brought to our attention on Monday, and I want to thank you, Amanda, for getting in touch with, with this facility, I think I spoke to individuals who came from Kentucky and, very knowledgeable. Unfortunately, three of the four individuals who had this problem, they had to be hospitalized, but thank God they're all doing well now, and on the road to recovery, but thanks, thanks for bringing them over, I think they took good samples, that, one of the problems, this can happen, it could happen here at work, it could happen at home, it could happen in different places where we visit, and Larry, you're right, you know, when construction is happening, the chances of this goes up also, and also wide fluctuations in temperature with the heat and everything also can cause, so, once we get, hopefully we'll get the report, what, in about a week?
Well, he was very confident we would have results by next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, okay.
And we'll give some answers.
So once we get the report, then we'll see whether there was any problem here at work, and if there is any, then obviously we'll get together and we'll address that. Any, any comments?
I guess I would say that, what a great team approach, as soon as we heard about it, you know, the rapid response was pretty impressive, Kentucky folks were here within hours, and I appreciate, Amanda, all the work that you did to make that happen, and your department as well. And Larry, thanks for making sure we did thorough testing, and I think just from the staff's perspective, that it's important to note that we are doing everything we can, and that we're following standard, standard care, one of, when we were on that call yesterday with the experts, they did say that there, we were doing everything that was appropriate, they compared us to other organizations that have had patterns of, of infection, and that they, we do not need to shut down buildings, we don't need to do any of those things, but continue to maintain the, the, the normal course of business, and that was their standard of care, the recommendation of experts, so I appreciate everything that everyone's done, we look forward to getting more information on what we can do to be proactive going forward.
Thank you. Anything you wanted to say? Thank you, thanks for the good work, and we'll stay in touch, and once we get the report, let's share it and then do whatever is necessary.
Following up on Commissioner Mathias' comments, two things, from what we can tell, the experts identified the source is probably occurring around the 5th of July.
Early July.
Early July, whereas there have been no new cases reported, from what you understand, isn't that right?
Yes, there's been no new.
And secondly, as the Commissioner indicated, we specifically grilled the experts as to whether it was safe for both employees and patrons, and the practice they have followed in other settings is to allow continued use of the buildings and everything else, with the testing process occurs, since there have been no new cases at this point, is that, is that kind of how you understood it as well?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other department heads? Yeah, please go ahead.
While I'm up here. Yeah, I want to give a report on the 29th, 7/29, the construction company did have a little mishap over there with a piece of concrete falling on a left wall, which did shut down electric in the buildings here, we had to go to generator backup. During the following days, we did find that it did take out some of our electronics in the kitchen area of the jail, I believe we had some computers go down, I did get a report from them on it, they finally got it to me yesterday, so, we do have that, we are still looking into all of what happened due to this, because of the power surge we did get from it. And I let them know about it right away, that we did take a power surge due to the accident that they had, so, I'll give, I'll let you get a copy of that, I'll get, I'll have to send, since it just got to us, and Darlene and I are working on trying to figure out all of the computer systems that were damaged during that time, and, and some cost to it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're right. So I just want to do a quick update, you know, we are fully recovered from the ransomware issue, there are a couple, you know, individual files that we have to put back in a different location because we have decommissioned some of the older servers. I've been in contact with Ariat, and, you know, I have gotten a quote on 700 licenses for the antivirus malware protection, and that does include the sheriff's office and 911, we're still trying to, you know, figure out exactly what they're going to do, you know, whether they're going to participate, and, you know, that would kind of be up to the Commissioners and, you know, the elected officials there. So, the council did approve money for my budget for next year to cover our 500 users on the county side, you know, so that will happen, but what I'm trying to work out is that, you know, they'll take it in two payments, so I can pay a portion of it this year out of this year's budget, you know, for the money that I had for semantic, you know, they have agreed to that, I'm going to send over the proposal to the attorney, make sure everything, you know, is correct there, and then we'll start that process, once we hear back from, you know, the sheriff and 911, to whether we need to proceed with those extra 200 licenses. Also, again, with Larry's, with the incident with Superior, you know, I got a text at 4:29 that we had lost power, because the phone room, actually, will text me whenever we lose power and switch to generator, so I had to immediately put a call into Larry, and, you know, he started making the phone calls to Superior and, and whoever he needed to talk to to see what happened, to make sure we were still up and functioning, everything was still working for the jail, you know, at, at night. And then, there is, we are going to, I'm working with the Commissioners on a policy that's going to get sent out, you know, that the users, the county employees will have to agree to, and then take new training also for cybersecurity and awareness, hopefully that will be coming out in very soon.
I want to commend you, Darlene, for bringing the cybercast course together, so you didn't mention that we had a meeting, and one of the focuses of the meeting was training and, and retraining and retraining employees and staff on how to make sure that they're protected, it's not just a one-time new employee training, it has to be, we have to be vigilant, and it has to be ongoing, because the criminals sadly are, are morphing and changing their techniques, and we need to be one step ahead of them. So, when employees receive the, that information, we need to be sure that they're going to, to take the training, and so we're going to put some, some protections in place so that the county is protected. I think we also need to shout out, not only to the folks who attended, but especially to Kevin McGuire from Michigan City Area Schools, he attended the meeting with county officials, and really did a great job of offering some, some security advice from their perspective, they've had, had issues, as all organizations have, and we were able to benefit from their expertise, Kevin was very open and forthcoming, not only training, but some other technical things that we should be doing, and gave some, I thought, some great ideas on how to use some free, a free. Kevin was very open and forthcoming, not only training, but some other technical things that we should be doing and gave some, I thought, some great ideas on how to use some free cyber checks so that we make sure that we're doing everything we can. So, just wanted the community to know that we are not sitting back. We are moving forward and being aggressively trying to figure out what other steps we can take to protect the taxpayers.
Yes. And I've also been contacted by some of the other counties in Indiana that have offered to, to, you know, do some penetration tests and whatnot with us.
Great.
You know, through our users group.
Now, thank you, Darlene. Basically, to summarize, basically, you have operationalized everything, all the computers are working, and we're putting in place new systems to prevent this from happening. And then we're doing the training of the staff to make sure that we use it appropriately and prevent these attacks from coming on. I have worked with Kevin McGuire, Vanessa, who is the school board, is very knowledgeable. And it's nice to have members of the community step up and volunteer their time and expertise. So, it's great to hear that, you know. And thank you again for doing everything you have done and your team has done to get us back to where we are right now.
Thank you. Also, on another side note, I have a meeting on Friday with the company that does Laserfish to look at all the files of the old records in the Clerk's Office that this was brought up at budget hearings, you know, for them to take their documents, scan them in and microfilm them at the same time.
Right.
And that way, we can free up some prime real estate that, you know, is in both courthouses and won't need so many filing cabinets. We did meet with Kathy, and we're supposed to meet with Kathy again on Friday, and then they'll come back with official numbers at that point.
All right. Commissioner Mathias was talking about another county.
Yeah, this morning I heard that Vigo County just was attacked with malware, so.
Actually, they were hit with ransomware.
Ransomware, yeah.
Yep. And I believe that was actually just about a week ago.
Yeah.
So, they got hit again. But yeah, they actually had gotten hit because the Insecton State actually does send out emails, and I've tried to copy everybody on, you know, cyber attacks and whatnot throughout Indiana and the surrounding states.
Sadly, it's not a rarity, as I guess the point, and the point is that we need to really work hard as a team, and it's really going to require that the employees help us with that as well.
Yeah.
Staying off sites we shouldn't be on and focusing on best customer service possible.
And paying attention to what emails they open.
That's right.
You know, we're as weak as our weakest user, you know, at that point, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything you wanted to say about it? Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah.
Hi, I'm Carrie Teller Jacobowski. I am your Director over at the County Museum. This month in July, we had 695 people attend. Where car show was very successful, we had 203 people. Some of the things that we've implemented, we have the, we are now part of the Blue Star Museum, which is one of 2,000 museums in the United States that offer our active duty and invite with their members to get in free from Memorial Day till Labor Day. We also have nine free days for our veterans to come in. Those have been sent out to all of our veteran organizations within the schools and within our community and some of the communities outside of our county to let them know that we do have that opportunity for our veterans and for our active duty. Some things that we've got going on in the museum right now, we've got an art exhibit that's running through October. We've got two exhibits that are coming in from the LaPorte, I mean, from the Indiana Historical Society that will be here in September and October. And we have a night on December 20th from 5:00 to 7:00 for a unique visit and viewing of our Geezi Church. So, our theme for Christmas will be LaPorte County at Christmas to Remember, and this will be Prancer's 30th Year Anniversary, so.
Thank you, Carrie. Thanks for coming and sharing the happenings at the museum. Thank you. Morning.
Good morning.
Jeremy.
Jeremy Sebicki from the County Parks Department. Just wanted to give you a couple of updates. Lure County Park, we've been working on that grant for almost a year now. We're stalled out a little bit, waiting on some help, but we, you will be seeing the new shelter excavation start probably next week. And then film material brought in to raise that up a little bit, and then concrete will probably be starting in September. The building trades of LaPorte High School is actually going to build the shelter. Do the concrete with, you know, professional concrete people are going to help us do that, but the kids are going to be doing pretty much the construction of the shelter. Our maintenance supervisor pretty well designed the shelter, and then we had to go to some architects and make sure everything was up to par on that. And then, once the concrete's in, you'll see new parking lots go in. We're going to have one new parking lot and then actually surfacing the existing parking lot at Lure. So, we've also ordered a lot of the benches and bike racks and stuff like that, water fountains that are going to go with that project. So, that project will be ramping back up, and then through this fall, we'll probably see most of it completed. We just got word from the DNR also that we got approved for another grant at Creek Ridge County Park. We just wanted to let you know on that. Paperwork or the e-signing stuff should be coming to Diane soon from them. And that project is addressing some drainage issues in our parking lot that drain into Trail Creek. So, essentially, the water out of our main parking lot where everybody parks drains into the drains and then basically right into a ditch that goes down to Trail Creek, which is not acceptable. So, it's a design-build contract or a grant that's an 80-20 grant, so, and basically, it's going to put what they call a bio-swell in there. So, it excavates the ditch, puts native plants in there, and those plants will soak up some of the nutrients or, you know, things that flow out of a parking lot. And they also slow the water down so we're not eroding the ditch that goes down into the creek. So, more to come on that soon, but we did get approved for that grant, so.
Right. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you getting the grant money to keep upgrading our park system.
Thank you, Jeremy. You do great, John.
Any other department heads? Seeing none, we'll move forward to, request has already been completed. Old business, consider payment of $31,250 local share with the transit triangle from the professional services. Sean, anything you want to add on?
If I could, I think from what we can determine, there seems to be consensus by the Council on payment of the $31,250 toward the transit triangle for this year. There seems to be a split of opinion on the Council in terms of whether to contract beyond May of 2020 versus 2022. You may want to consider simply authorizing the current payment of local share and then perhaps directing us to negotiate a revised interlocal only through May of 2020 until we can get further indication from the Council as to their intentions going forward. I mean, this way, it would at least keep the service going through May of 2020, and then perhaps it can be revisited again next year if all the entities wish to do that or there are other funding sources. But my sense is there is currently a split in the Council as to whether to contract beyond May of 2020 or not.
We had a workshop, and as you know, we have been supportive of the concept that students can get to Purdue and people who do not have vehicles or cannot drive, they have an opportunity to travel within the county. So, but having said that, the concerns that were expressed at the workshop was about the amount of usage. And so, I think that's something we need to continue to revisit, and I think at least by doing this for a year, the students who are currently enrolled, they know that they can rely on this transportation, and then we can continue to look at this and see whether we can continue beyond that or not with the Council's support, yeah. Any comments?
Yeah, so, Mr. Friedman, I was going to suggest that we authorize just a signature instead of a three-year interlocal agreement, that we just do a one-year and have it sunset next summer after we make sure that we aren't dropping any current riders, especially students who will be forced perhaps to drop out of college if they don't have transportation that they were counting on for the semester, this semester use in particular, and then other employees who use the feet. But, you know, the bottom line is that the service, while it is a great concept, sometimes concepts don't pan out, and the ridership is terrible. And, you know, I brought up, let's market it differently, let's come up with a different approach. And, you know, the folks who are in charge of this, God love them, they're transportation experts, they aren't marketers, they're not, that's not, they're not communication experts, and I get that. So, unless we come up with a different plan, you know, I join the Council, and they're concerned that you can't keep funding empty buses driving around. Environmentally, it's a terrible idea. And second of all, there's got to be better, a better way to serve our community than having empty vehicles driving around. So, I would say we fund it to make sure that we take care of the people who are currently using it, and then they can come up with other strategies on how to get around. But we would have given them nine to 10 months' notice and that we authorize a signature on the interlocal agreement for that time period.
Any comments, Mr. business?
Well, we talked about it earlier. I'm okay with the one-year concept. See how it goes. Got a couple of other ideas we kick around. But I'd make most of it go ahead and accept the.
Motion to approve.
The one-year agreement as presented.
Okay, thank you.
And second, support, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Next item, the new business section is consider ordinance to increase auditors' real estate office fees.
This is to come into compliance with the new state law that raises all the auditor's fees.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is consider issuing public notice regarding hearing on disposition of county property, the LaPorte County home and Addison five acres excluding the county barn. Ms. Friedman?
Yes, President, I'm a commission, and Mr. Direction to us in cannon with the Council to move forward with the.
Move forward with the process for auction of the county home. We've also made clear, and I want to thank Mr. Hendrick's office, Surveyor's office, for making very clear on the aerial and the description, that the county barn is not included in that parcel. So, the county home, the adjoining five-plus acres would be put up for auction. There is a process that's set up by statutes, pretty elaborate process. We're utilizing Attorney Alex Bergen Schmidt, who is the attorney who works with us on tax sale issues and property conveyances. And so, we would ask for authorization to issue public notice regarding a hearing. Each of the Council and the Commission must conduct a hearing on disposition of public property, and so that's what you'd be authorizing today if that's your pleasure.
Any other questions for Mr. Friedman?
This is something I've been trying to get done for years. Finally.
So, you have a motion here?
To approve it.
All right. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Item C, consideration of vacating portion of Beach Drive in LaPorte, 111 Maples LLC. Ms. Friedman, anything you wanted to comment on this one?
Okay.
Mr. Friedman, you want to comment on this one?
Yes, the, yeah, the vacating portion.
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby is here representing petitioners on that. We've received a recommendation by the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. Briefly, just to reiterate, Mr. Friedman just informed you last few weeks ago, we were before the County Plan Commission asking for a portion of Beach Drive to be vacated. I can't believe frankly that it hadn't been done. We had consent from both neighbors, no remonstrator showed up, and you have before you a unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission. The oddity here is normally when you consider this, there are multiple property owners on both sides. My clients actually own a parcel that's completely covered by water, and then there's a road that was never developed, plus the main portion. So, we respectfully ask that you consider and approve.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
And you can waive, this would be an ordinance that is prepared by Mr. Willoughby and submitted, but you can waive the rules and suspend and approve both readings of the ordinance today if that's your pleasure as well.
I entertain such a motion.
It's an ordinance, so we need to ask for public comment.
Is there anybody in public who would like to comment on this one? Seeing none, I entertain a motion for waiving the rules and doing the second reading and approving it today.
Motion to waive the rules, that should be one motion, and then the motion to approve would be a second motion. So, motion to waive the rules and hear this on second reading?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
And motion to approve the request to vacate the portion of Public Street, commonly known as Beach Drive, located to the rear of 111 Maple Drive, LaPorte, Indiana.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is reconsideration of rezoning parcel in Pleasant Township, M1 to B1.
Petitioner on that. Do you remember?
Seeing no one, this was a favorable recommendation by the Plan Commission.
Commission, yes.
So, I would therefore, beyond Plan Commission, I would say make a motion to accept.
I would approve, but could we read it so that the public knows what this is, that we're rezoning the portion?
Actually, I will read the Planning Commission's favorable recommendation that includes the whole description here. On July 23rd, 2019, the LaPorte County Plan Commission gave favorable recommendation for the rezoning of 1.267 acre portion of a parcel to B1, Neighborhood Commercial District, commonly known as 3522 South State Road, 104, LaPorte, Indiana, in Pleasant Township, currently zoned M1. The petitioners are LaPorte SR 104 BTS Retail LLC and Emory Investments. And the Plan Commission said that they were sending a favorable recommendation and were hoping that it meets our control.
Personally, as long as the petitioner is here or through Council, then we'd say recommended on both readings, but since the, I don't see the petitioner or the, they're... Good, great. Thank you. I think, yep, they come up. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with the process, so I didn't want to interrupt. The, thank you for reading the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
We are requesting to rezone. As you know, the property is currently M1, and we're rezoning it, requesting to the Business District so we can construct a new Dollar General store.
Dollar General, okay.
Yep. I think it makes sense for this, since it's so a long state road, 104 there, it's a less intense use than the manufacturing. And I, other areas around the, where the site is, they're currently zoned, the same zoning as B1 District, and I think it'd be a good addition to the community, and it provides a few more jobs for the community of still well.
Okay. In record, could you state what firm you're with?
Yes. So, my name is Whitney Pizala. I'm with A.R. Engineering. We're the civil engineering. We're 4664 Campus Drive in Kalamazoo, Michigan. And I have the developer with me today is Tom Cohen with Zerumba Group, and they're out of Lakewood, Ohio.
All right. Any questions?
No questions.
Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
So, does this need to be heard on two readings?
Yeah, it really should. Did you have an attorney with you at Plan Commission, or did, because there'll need to be a proposed ordinance submitted to the Commission as well, so.
Is that being prepared?
Yes. Either you're stepping through Council. Generally, it's Council that prepares the proposed ordinance for the, that allows the rezoning on second reading. So, they would, our recommendation is they approve it on first reading, and then you come to the next meeting with the proposed ordinance that reflects the rezoning.
Okay.
All right. I'd recommend approval on.
On first reading, and I support it. All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. So, we have approved it on first reading, and once we have the ordinance drafted, then we can consider the second reading.
Okay. Is there a certain date that we have to get it to, to be on?
It's the third Wednesday of this month at evening 6:00 P.M.
Okay. And do I need to get it to you a certain time before that?
Sure, at least 48 hours before the meeting so that it can be agended.
Okay. And just to you?
That's why I say, talk to an attorney so that the attorney can prepare the ordinance and then submit the notice for us, and then can appear with you. By August 16th.
August 16th?
Right.
Okay.
And you may also want to talk to the Office of Community and Economic Development. They welcome, Tony Rodriguez welcomes new business development and wants to do whatever they can to assist in that, so.
And he can guide you through the process, Tony Rodriguez.
Tony, okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item E, consideration of first addendum to professional services agreement between Assessor, TMA, and Consider Beacon Schneider Group for training. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm feeling well today, so.
They're two separate. The one is through the TMA. That's the contract that we've had with them. They do the personal property audits. Right now, we have over $600,000 sitting in that fund. When this is signed, they're going to release $500,000 to be distributed back to the taxing units that we've collected through the additional assessments that we found in these audits, personal property. So, basically, it's just a continuation of the contract that we...
So basically, it's just a continuation of the contract that we've had. Shaw, I think, has looked at.
We've reviewed it, and we're comfortable with the format, commissioners.
Very good. So they've actually brought us in, and we try to tell the public it's not really, you're not being penalized, it's more of an educational, because then when they file their personal property the following year, they know what they should be or shouldn't be putting on that, because in Indiana, personal property is a self-assessment. So I don't know whether they have it or not, and it's an accounting procedure. So TMA's been helpful in doing these audits. They can go back to three years, but it's been more of an educational process, so hopefully this number will come down.
Very good.
Motion to approve, both across.
Support.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
And the other one, the Beacon Schneider Group Training, that, basically, that's a program we have, and that's for the classification of ag soil types. So I have two employees that are going to be trained, Schneider Group's coming to Laporte, but anytime someone wants something to put in the agriculture, we have to soil type it because that's part of the formula on how we come up with the value for the acre.
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 2020-year maintenance contracts, Director of Facilities, Larry.
Larry Lewandowski, Director of Facilities. First off, I'd like to thank Mrs. Marks for her nice comments about the work being done out at the barn. The guys have been working really hard trying to get it there. What I've done is I've reached out to a lot of our existing contracts that we have with the county. I've also reached out to a few new ones. I've got everything put together. I'd like to stay with everybody, all of our existing contracts, except two of them would like to change two. One of them is our fire protection. I found where we can get a savings with using another company. I've reached out to them, we've compared apples to apples. The other one is going with a, we currently use Sintas for all of our mats and our toiletry stuff, and we found another company that's up and coming. We've looked at them, and we believe we can do about a 23% savings over the year by switching over to them. So I've got all the contracts together. I had, I did send them to Shaw, and I did take his recommendation, get letters out and stuff, so that's what I'm looking at, pass them on to you, Dr. Corb, I'm looking for.
You need to repeat that, 23% savings by shopping around. I think that's awesome. That's exactly the kind of
We're trying.
work we need to do, protecting the taxpayers' dollars. That's wonderful.
Thank you, Larry, for doing that. And Shaw, any suggestions on the contracts?
No, I think that they all meet with the normal specifications, even the changes are consistent with the standard form that we use on those, and so, but as the commissioner maintains, it's a cost savings and it's a win-win, so we're very comfortable with it.
I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being proactive, Larry.
Next item on the agenda is consider approving settlement in the matter of Thomas Smith and Teresa Smith. Mr. Beechey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Beechey, Dr. Beechey, Sir Ben Elliott, my apologies for the incessant coughing, but I had the world's worst summer cold ever. We defended the county on a case where a snowplow driver either ran a stop sign or went through a stop sign and T-boned a resident of the county. Liability is clear, we've investigated all the facts. There are significant injuries, because of HIPAA laws, I can't get into the details, but the medicals were significant in this case. In addition to the plaintiff, his wife is also partially disabled, so he was unable to take care of his wife. And this, now, we have a state statutory cap of $700,000 per claim. We negotiated both claims together. This went to mediation after extensive discovery, depositions, and review of medical records. We have a settlement of $750,000. The county is on the hook for $500,000. Medicals in this case exceed $380,000. So we have permanent damage to his face without the ability to replace his bottom teeth because of steel plates, so the injuries are extensive. We, now, the county's cap, the county's part is $500,000, and then Trandler's then picks up the overage, okay? So for both claims, we've arrived at a settled amount of $750,000. We see no success in trial, and we believe that this settlement is much less overt than what we'd receive in a verdict in a jury trial. So we're asking for approval.
I've followed this case from the beginning, and without going into detail, I would recommend that we pay this.
The injuries are extensive in this case.
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Because of the size of this, it will need to go in front of the county council, and the settlement agreement makes explicit that it is conditional on approval by both the commission and the council, so it will be agended for the council's next meeting.
Thank you very much for the clarification. The next item on the agenda is consider request by Jay Schaffner to move emergency siren from the former Westville City Hall to new location, attorney David Ambers.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Can I approach, please?
Yes, please.
I'm here on behalf of Action Industrial Development Corporation, which is owned by Mr. Schaffner. He recently purchased the former police station down in Westville, and was told at the time of the purchase that there was a process going forward about moving the tornado siren that is at the police station. The only thing I have to give you today is some town council minutes that I was just recently provided, where they had voted to relocate that siren. There's no easement for the siren that exists on Mr. Schaffner's title work, or industrial development's title work, and I guess we'd just like to open the process of discussion of is it possible to relocate this siren? Obviously, the town of Westville is in favor of such, but I'm not sure how much or any the county's been involved or discussed this matter. So Mr. Friedman asked me to attend to kind of get the ball rolling here to see if we could open some dialogue on this siren.
Ms. Friedman, any comments from your perspective?
I'd like to comment.
Yes, please.
This came to our attention in the auditor's office, and that this was a private sale that was going on, and we told them that we were not responsible for moving that. The county is not responsible. If Westville wanted to move it, they could move it. And in fact, I think, I don't know, Jeff, do you remember that conversation? And so I don't think the county has any liability in this. I don't think that they have any stake in moving this. If the town of Westville wants to move it, they can pay for it.
Okay. Ms. Friedman, did it have any other comments?
The auditor's tough.
I'm not going to take exception to the auditor's comments. She makes the point, we talked about it earlier in the week, that that should have been a condition of sale, and, you know, I think it might be helpful to have EMAs input as well. Jeff, representing the EMA, may have some comments on this, since they're the ones charged with placing the sirens and what have you.
Jeff Wiatrowski, Laporte County EMA. Yes, we were counsel, consultants about this. At that time, there was a sale going through. We supported that being moved, however, once again, when we talked with the auditor's office, we were told that that's not our responsibility. That building and property was actually owned by the town of Westville, and if they wanted it moved, that was fine. You know, we supported that move. In fact, it was being moved south to the park down there is where the location that it was. However, with the cost and everything, I think the town of Westville actually backed out of that because of the cost of what it would take to move it.
Thank you. And just let me say this, and Jeff can back me up on this. We do have sirens on private property. We have one just south of us on Kroger. So, you know, there's no reason that that has to be moved.
Okay.
I think the reason that it was, Mr. Schaffner's been, or his office has been contacting us, I think the biggest issue is the location of the siren. It's kind of in the downtown area, but it's right behind the building. I'm not sure what his plans are for the building, but if you're looking at putting any type of apartment or anything in there, even an office, you literally have a siren that's probably 15 feet from that building.
Okay.
And it's not high up. It's not like, you know, the Kroger siren, like she mentioned, is higher up. This one's kind of low, so.
All right.
Where located there in the first place? They or we did?
Couldn't tell you that it's been there for many years.
Just remember.
Or any of us, probably.
And keep in mind, that was the town's property at that time.
Correct.
Okay.
So, Ms. Friedman, who owns the siren? Does the county own the siren?
It's a county siren, and we maintain and service all the sirens through the Emergency Management Agency.
And if they decide to move it, would you like for them to move to a location that you would like to choose, or what is the process?
Well, absolutely. We don't want it put somewhere where it's going to be detrimental for anyone else or for us to get to, and that's why we kind of looked at it, and when they were looking at moving it, we discussed moving it to the park at the south intersection of, or north intersection of 421 and 6.
Okay, so that's your recommendation?
Yeah, that would be the best location.
But the cost of moving the siren should be borne by the individual then?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Do you have any estimate of cost to?
If there was, I was not part of that, I'm not sure, sir.
Would you suggest that we have a motion to indicate that that would be our recommendation?
And Mr. Ambers had talked that his client bought the, he was interested in preserving the building, as I understand it, so.
He is thinking about putting apartments in there. He's not sure what he's going to do with it yet, but yeah, you know, as Jeff said, somebody who wants rents an apartment, they're not going to want that siren right outside the door, and then there's a question of its efficiency, if it's not very high up, how far of an area does it actually reach or advise in the event of severe weather?
But the tenant gets first notice on any emergency this way, so.
Loud and often, huh?
Every month.
See if it benefits you. That's what we're trying to share with you.
Since to Ambers, you, from this conversation, you might have figured out that probably the county will not be moving that siren, and, but if your client would like to move it, then probably Mr. Wiatrowski will let you know where it can be moved to.
We'll get back to the town of Westville also.
Yeah, if you could, please, yeah.
Take care of that.
If you could.
I've added downtown more than my client wants it away from the building.
Yeah, if you could, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you.
I think that brings us to the end of the agenda. Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Mathias.
I have a couple things I wanted to apprise the commissioners and the public about. So you may remember, we organized the Laporte County Rural Broadband Task Force. After five meetings, they've been held once a month for the last five months, we have decided to amend the name of the task force in order to be more inclusive. As we've discovered and gathered facts, we have found that it's better for us to present as a whole county, so the broadband task force will be called the Laporte County Broadband Task Force, dropping the name rural, because in order for us to be seen as a county that needs broadband support, we need to be seen as an entire unit. So we are dropping the name rural. For our rural listeners, this does not mean we are ignoring your clear and present need, but in order for us to seek funding and seek support from federal and state bodies, we need to be seen as an entire organizational unit, so that's one important thing. I also wanted to share that the task force has developed four subcommittees. Subcommittee on Communication, another one on mapping and data. The next group is the influencers, and that's in order for us to gain some political traction on funding. And then digital inclusion. Each subcommittee is comprised of not less than, and this is pretty impressive, five volunteer experts from relevant fields that are serving Laporte County out of the goodness of their heart, offering their professional advice and including their time, so that's pretty significant. So those four groups have, each have five volunteers on it. We've created a critical PAP document. We created a mission and vision statement. I'll read the mission for the Laporte County Broadband Task Force. The vision is equitable deployment and utilization of adequate broadband infrastructure to improve the quality of life and competitiveness for every resident, business, and organization in Laporte County. Our mission statement is to ensure Laporte County plans for, transitions to, and prospers in the digital age through a transformation into a human-centered, digitally-inclusive, technology-ready ecosystem. So that sounds like a lot of really big words, but what it's trying to imply and express is that Laporte County wants to be sure that we are not left behind, that every citizen, every business, and every organization in Laporte County has equal and open access to the adequate broadband infrastructure that they need for their purposes, and that Laporte County in general is building a tech-ready ecosystem, because as we all know, it used to be that technology was an amenity. When we all started with our dial-ups, it was sort of like you were very lucky if you got dial-up. Now our children use it for their studies, they have e-learning days, and they walk around with their Chromebooks. Our businesses rely on technology, and so for us to stay competitive and to be a place where people want to build their business, build their families, stay here, we need to make sure that we are competitive. And so this group of almost all volunteer experts are putting their shoulders together, and it's a heavy lift, but it's an important lift, and so we're working on that, and I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that work. Secondly, I wanted to update you on the county website work. There are two surveys up. One is the survey on the Laporte County Broadband Task Force is still up. I've had two calls in the last couple days asking if they could still fill out the survey. That survey is still on the current county website, and so if you have broadband issues, you want to make sure that you take that survey, so that we're looking for data points all across the county. Even if you have halfway decent service, but you wish it was faster, please fill out that survey so we have as much information as we can on where the broadband dips and sways in our county, because that's really important information. Sadly enough, there's not a lot of digital honesty out there, so a lot of the companies that say they have awesome broadband service, that may not be exactly accurate, and so we're trying to get boots-on-the-ground data rather than rely on people who have profit in mind. We're interested in building an ecosystem that is fair for everyone, so the more information we have from our citizens, the better off we'll be. Secondly, the county website, we have a survey basically looking for information from our taxpayers and our citizens on what they would like to see on the website. So we have a group of super users who are gathering in, over the next 10 days. Those are county employees who will be helping us build a really robust site that is user-friendly, mobile-friendly, all those things that we are accustomed to, but we want to make sure that the website provides the information that citizens are looking for. So there's a survey also on the county website, if you want to fill that out and let us know what you're looking for, that would be helpful information for us to have. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and again, thank you for your leadership on that. Now, I'm not going to use the word rural anymore. It's the broadband task force, and, because I think it's very important that we get our entire county into the digital age and have access to digital technology, so thank you very much for doing that, yeah. Commissioner Wazinski?
Yeah, since our last meeting, the last two weeks, actually, I attended the Veterans for the Wars National Convention in Orlando, Florida. I'm serving this year as the Indiana Department Chief of Staff, also appointed for the ninth time to the National Legislative Committee. So we had a meeting there with our National Legislative Committee, and will be traveling to Washington, DC to meet with all of our congressmen again next month. Yeah, I was appointed to a new committee, National Security and Foreign Affairs, and POW. Very interesting meeting, lasted about two and a half hours. We had the Vice Minister of Veterans Affairs from China, very interesting presentation. The Director of the POW MIA Department talked about their efforts locating American servicemen who have been missing in action. As you know, we found a guy from Laporte, actually, he'd been missing since 1968, they found him in 2003. I had the honor to go to Arlington National Cemetery when he was interned finally there, Charles Lindawell, and we still have Donald Transky missing from Michigan City, has not yet been located. Their efforts are really amazing, what they put up, what they do. And then also, this was very interesting, we had the U.S. Director of the Selective Service, which was appointed by Mr. Trump to head up the Selective Service. I was actually appointed to the Selective Service Board, I think by President Bush. It's been a long time, but nothing's ever happened, but a couple years ago, I had to go for training, and this is a subject that has come up, and we'll be probably talking about it in DC. about it in DC. The idea being that rather than just have to register for the draft, you might actually have to go for two years and have a commitment, which if you think about the plus side of that, there's a lot of students out there that could use a little discipline, a little responsibility, learn about history, a chance to grow up. There's of course people that say, I don't want my kid, you know, be in, in the army, but if you look around at some of the issues we have in this county with hiring younger people, I, I think a couple of years in the military, it might just be a plus. So it, definitely the door is open for discussion, keep you informed on how that goes, but very interesting convention, so.
Thanks, thanks for that update. You know, talking about veterans issues, I had the opportunity of visiting Normandy last week and I cannot say enough about how these monuments and are all maintained. As a matter of fact, one of our friends from Indianapolis is on the Monument Commission, so I called him from there to let them know how, how these are being maintained and, and the heroism of the greatest generation when they went and liberated Europe was, it's amazing when you stand there and, and think about what they did for all of us. One other thing I wanted to mention was there is a meeting at the White House on August 20th. Commissioners from Indiana, Illinois, Wisconsin, Minnesota have been invited and so I'm planning to attend that. And then I, when I communicated with them, I said, you know, I'm concerned about cybersecurity with what happened recently and so they connected me to a gentleman in the, in the Department of Homeland Security who happened to be Nick Bark from Laporte. So I'll be meeting him and so I'll give you a report when I get back at our next meeting. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All right.
Support.